Super Hit, 1049 W A X I, Rockville, Clinton.
Everyone wants to join us for the pledge? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So everybody had a chance to review meeting minutes from last week? Do you guys have a chance to review the meeting minutes from last week or no?
I did the best I could with the minutes. We didn't have a recording and that was after the election and I was kinda tired.
I made a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting, remember?
Any one second?
I'll second.
Aw, Mark made a motion.
I just seconded. Making motions.
All in favor for the acceptance of meeting minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Sign those one, Cody. Sign those minutes.
This one?
Yes.
Do we need to go over this tonight or?
Um, we do, but you need to do public comment first.
Okay, start the meeting with public comments. Anybody, Mark?
We're here with some not so good news. We got our bids, we put the project out for bid and everything came in pretty high. In fact, about fifty percent higher than what we originally estimated. In two and a half years, asphalt's doubled, concrete's close to that, and limestone, aggregate's gone up quite a bit as well. So we're gonna have to adjust our scopes for the project a little bit. And basically, the way we're gonna be able to make it work is not do any work along Main Street. Still be able to attach to the park with asphalt off of the trail. And then we'll just have to go up here and start.
Start it.
Just start it up where we were gonna cross the street up there. We may, I mean, want to inform the town and I guess get your agreement or whatever that that's how we're gonna do it now. It, even the utility move, I mean, that added a bunch to, it was pretty crazy what that came up to as well, to move the utility poles. So at this point in time, until we get some work done, I think even with the bids, with our adjustments to scope, that we can lower the cost there. But we need to get some things done and see if we have anything and maybe come back and be able to do something along Main Street later on. But at this point in time, to get the project going and get everything built, we're gonna have to hold off on that part.
Right. So you'll still do the asphalt through the park and down the alley?
To Main Street.
To Main Street?
Yes.
And just, they'll all just have to use the sidewalk or the road if they're?
Right, to get up to another end of town.
Head to the trail that way?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay.
So you won't be able to do nothing in front of J Ts?
No.
So they'll come off the asphalt into the roadway?
Into the roadway or onto the, there's a sidewalk.
Which, there's no sidewalk, they're gonna have to go across the street.
There's a sidewalk in front of J Ts.
There's, there's one there as well. So, I mean, it's still walkable, obviously with the sidewalk. We had hoped to obviously do some changes as we had showed you before, but the way it stands now, we're not gonna be able to do that. Should be getting the contracts out within the next week or so to the contractors. I think they're expecting to get started shortly after first year.
That's disappointing.
Yes, very much so.
Like, doing some painting stripes down the side, like doing a bike path? That'd be something we could do as a town, potentially?
I mean, maybe on down the road.
That's something we might be able to look with that grant, Cody, you were talking about, actually use those finances.
So, I was telling him, my company, like I've already discussed, like putting future grants forward for the project. And they're, are, they're pretty much already telling me that they're committed to, you know, continuing with this project. And like, as long as, you know, we're working with the project, that we can do a yearly submission, so.
Okay.
That'd be a couple more ten thousand dollar grants, so, which the state matches four times, so it ends up being fifty.
Right.
Okay, good job.
So they were gonna do that drain at middle and?
Yeah, that was, that was part of.
At Central and Main. I think maybe we should be thinking about doing that ourselves.
Okay, well.
Maybe that could go in the street thing.
Maybe, well, we can talk about that when we get to community crossings and stuff like that.
Well, that should help anyway along there, so roads done.
Right, right. Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, that's disappointing, Mark.
It is, very much so.
Okay, any other public comments? Let's move on to old business.
Let me say that, you can go into your old business list. I've contacted Emily Davis at the Indiana Department of Technology again, I'm waiting to hear back from her. I thought that I had everything filled out for the .gov email addresses, but I don't know, maybe I didn't. So, I did contact her again. Our awning?
Hey Natalie, real quick, do we know what those are gonna cost?
Well, there's like ten dollars a month for like a certain amount of them, for like four or five. But then I was in there and I did a bunch of stuff and she told me that I would get a response after I did this online thing and I never got a response. So I went back and I started to redo it when I realized that she didn't message me back. But then I'm like, I think I've already ordered this. So I emailed her directly, so let me get, figure out what, so, yeah. I don't know. The awning for out front, they said that they got behind, that they've had several people out sick at ACE. I told them that they absolutely have to have it installed by the end of the year, so I can pay it out of this budget with that grant. So they were putting a lettering on it at the end of last week, so they're hoping to come and do it pretty soon.
Okay, good.
Okay. Also in your old business, the election ordinance that we did to change the terms, this has to be redone. Scott Craig made a mistake in the original one and he has the terms wrong in the original one, so he called me. He said we just need to redo this to the new one, the updated one. He said there was just a typo in it. And it's so, need you guys to reread this tonight. And did you, did we actually pass this last month or did we first read it?
No, we passed.
We passed it, okay. So, I don't know, we just need to pass that one, there's just a one typo that was in this one, so.
It says we'll have a second reading in December.
Well, I put that on there and I think that I meant to put that on the salary.
You could say, I was gonna say, I'm pretty sure we could pass that.
But yeah, I couldn't remember, so, that's the new, that's the corrected one.
Okay, I'll pass that down and then we can. Only other old business, I am working on the Title IX ADA plan stuff. It's been a fun last like week, so I am trying to plow through that and it's super fun, let me tell you.
It is.
I understand why they, a lot of towns like pay people to do it, even though like it's not something that we should have to pay someone to do it. I understand why people do. Carol, how, what are we doing along with the sign there?
Well, I ordered some big jugs of paint, I just got them, brought them tonight, so.
Okay.
I thought after the holidays we'd get all that, I love that.
Okay.
When you're back.
Hopefully, a couple more, yeah.
We're both healthy.
Yeah, you too.
Yeah.
Hopefully, a couple more chiropractor visits and it's back to normal, that's what I'm hoping for at least. Okay, time on paint. And then. Once you guys have had a chance to look that over, let me know and we can make a motion to approve and get that out of the way. And we also need to redo the salary ordinance as well, okay, just to prove it.
Need to do a second reading on that, yeah.
Okay. And nothing's changed on it from?
The salary ordinance.
Yeah.
This is the updated one with the three percent raises and raising the deputy clerk to fourteen, so this has got raises in.
And the fourteen, perfect.
Yes, so.
Any one of them to make a motion to accept the ordinance of altering the election terms?
I'll make a motion to accept the new, new and improved ordinance.
Without the typo.
Any one second?
I will.
Okay, Becky, thank you. Go ahead and you guys can sign that. And then take a chance, second, to review the salary ordinances. And that's with the three percent and fourteen dollar per hour for the clerk, deputy clerk like Natalie just said. And we can go through and get that approved as well.
Make your motion for everyone to vote on the ordinance for the election.
John Anthony, he said he's under the weather and will not be coming.
Go ahead and make a motion to, or all in favor of the ordinance, or the election ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Post. When do are they doing the light contest?
I'm not really sure when they're doing the light contest. Here is the salary ordinance, there goes a sign. We'll do that.
Think the lights need to be registered by the fifteenth and I think, emphasis on think. Judging as the sixteenth and seventeenth.
I just thought about it, I, I was thinking about the park lights and then it made me think of Christmas lights and I was like.
Are you putting some up?
I should, I was gonna put a lot of stuff up, no.
Not now?
Yeah. I was planning on putting a lot of Christmas decorations out this year. That was my plan for last weekend, that's why I took it off and then. My back had other. Yeah, my, my back was like, yep, you're not doing that, or anything. Okay, and then, has everybody had a chance to look over the salary ordinance?
I have.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Anybody wanna make a motion to approve the salary ordinance for next year?
I'm ready to do a reading.
I'll make a motion that we approve the salary ordinance for next year. Cody made me.
Any one second?
I'll second it.
Carol, you guys are on it tonight.
Jumping right in there.
Go ahead and sign that and pass it down.
Take your vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thanks for reminding me that one.
Mark, did you have anything else? I mean, you don't have to stay.
That's okay.
I mean, this, I know this is so riveting, it's riveting.
We promise not to hurt you afterwards.
Okay, on to new business, anybody have any new business?
This'll kind of fall under old business.
Okay.
We, we were fortunate that we have received our community crossings grant as we applied for. The total grant fund is two hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. This will pave Main Street from the South Town Limit around Lowell's Lane to Central Street. This will also pave Park Street, which is a small one block street, but that will complete the paving between Central and Middle that was done a few years ago. So that'll be finished. We need to do, I don't know if we really need to do a new one, but it was my intention to do a new one. Typically, the town council president signs documents for community crossings, they did send a new resolution for us to do for that tonight. And then I send this over, they're actually using electronic signings, so, this year, but, so there's a resolution for that.
This would be Resolution Three?
Yes, that'll be, I, actually, I think it's like Resolution Eight.
Okay.
So, all I can look at is. Just leave that blank for now. The project will have to be under contract by April, I think. If it's not on this letter, but. So, we will, they'll start putting our bid packets together, I gotta get with Katie Adams, she's a, Brian Fleck, who has been our community crossings engineer. He has left HWC, he's working for a different engineering firm now. So Katie Adams will be our go-to to finish up this project. But I'm excited to get that project done. Our match is around eighty thousand dollars, so I do want you guys as council members to look at your fund reports at some point. My preference is to take in motor vehicle restricted, N D H restricted, sits right now at thirty-eight thousand. I would like to use thirty from that for the match. Your fund, all your fund numbers have changed, okay? We're now on four digit fund numbers as prescribed by the State Board of Accounts. If you go to the bottom of your first page of your fund report, the C edit money, that's your edit money. That fund sits at fifty-six thousand, I'd like to take about thirty from there as well. So that leaves about twenty more, there's different pots of money that can come from. Some can come from local owned street, it can come from CCI, it can come from CCD. We can use some ARP money since we only committed ninety-six thousand of that to the stormwater project. So just think about that, think about what you think we're gonna need next year, so we can just kind of figure out where we wanna match from. But the match is not, it's a non-issue, we have the money, so.
Pass that down.
And while you guys look at that resolution, I'll update you on the stormwater project. Stormwater project, we have received financing on the financing portion of that, since there will be a bond that has to go out to finance the rest of it. The Indiana Finance Authority has given us the approval for that money. The application has actually gone in, we will be awarded in February if we get the grant, I feel pretty confident that we'll get that grant. After the last walkthrough, Carol and I did a walkthrough with Christie, Gerald, and with Okra. And the Okra lady was sick, so we did it via phone. And she seemed really positive about the whole thing and that that would come through for us, so we should know in February. And our project, Mark, is a lot more expensive than what we thought it would be. So, but we, we knew that kinda going in this round, so.
Have you guys all had a chance to look over the community crossings? Or Becky's?
Is that what I've got?
Yeah, yeah, you're still looking at it, that's fine.
We're supposed to sign that?
Well, we're on the way back down, yeah. We gotta approve it and.
Resend.
So I shouldn't sign it until we approve it?
Well, we, I mean, anybody wanna make a motion to approve?
Someone's very serious.
I feel like it's kinda, money's on the way.
I think that's number seven, Cody.
Seven, okay.
If I put a seven there, it could easily be put to eight.
Yeah, that works.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, anyone want a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of passing the community crossings? Say aye. Any who want to oppose, no? Okay, perfect, and then just sign that as it comes back down and then we're on to whatever new business we may have. My new business is something to get comfortable.
Can you stretch when you're?
Literally, it's my little back, so just like everything.
All right, who made your motion?
Uh, Becky and then I think Carol, second.
We should make them guess.
Yeah. They can't tell us apart.
In other business, we have received, we have new funds on your fund report, which they show as empty right now. We've received money from the opioid settlement. The government sued Johnson and Johnson and all these Merck and everyone for opioid money. And Scott Craig put us in that lawsuit years ago, you know, 'cause you didn't know if you, if you're gonna get anything or not. So now the money is coming down and the money will come to the town through two thousand and thirty-eight. It comes in really small amounts, so it's, there's not a lot you can do with it. I'm not really fully sure what we can do with it at this point in time. But this week we did receive nine hundred and three dollars and seventy-one cents in the opioid fund settlement unrestricted money. So I, the, it's still very unclear as to what all this can be used for from the Attorney General's office. And then we received twenty-one hundred, or two thousand one hundred eight dollars and sixty-four cents in the abatement fund, which is the more restricted fund. And so what we can actually use that for, I don't know yet, but that money came in, it'll appear on your fund report. And then going forward, we'll get like a hundred and sixty dollars a year unrestricted and then like three hundred and seventy-seven dollars a year in the other portion. So, I don't know, I did put it out there to Kevin, since, you know, public safety, putting it in, you know, for them, fire department, whatever. But that money is now here, so. I have converted all of our fund numbers, they were supposed to be converted by January first of this year, but hey, better late than never. I converted all of them to the four digit funds as prescribed by the State Board of Accounts. It's been kind of a interesting conversion process through Keystone. It is now complete, my computer is also fixed, our computers have been remapped and rerouted. Randy Cleaver from Cleaver Consulting came in last week and he got everything moved. Andrea's on her new computer, I'm on my new computer, my old computer just needs to be removed from my desk. Mine is now a server for the office, of course Randy came in the day we lost power for an hour. Um, mine is now server for the office. Of course, Randy came in the day we lost power for an hour. In the midst of him working, but we managed to get it done. He was great. Everything's working great. He charged us a hundred and seventy dollars, which was extremely cheap, I think. And so really happy with that work.
Any other new business?
I gave you guys a list of minute, or meeting dates for next year. There was no like major holidays on any of those, except for Valentine's Day.
There's a major holiday happening on October tenth.
Is that your birthday?
I remember that now.
So, that's, I gave you guys that, um.
I would say we're on to park, or just park. Water sewer? So, looks like we had a hundred and fifty, or a hundred and fifteen penalties. Twelve tags, no shut offs.
We shut one off right as we got a payment, but we turned it back.
Street. Jase, anything to report? Nothing.
Okay, can we go back to water for just a second? Um, you have a spreadsheet that I gave everybody. It's, um. That is a list of debts on water and wastewater. Obviously, there's no names on there, but there are account numbers. You can see most of those, um, most of those are really old, like seventeen, eighteen. There's no addresses for these people. And there's, yeah, I'm, a couple of these people are not with us anymore. Um, none of these people live in town anymore. And I would like to write these off. I know we did this several years ago, um. The problem with them, and I do have some that I didn't put on here that I am gonna file in small claims court that have happened in the last couple of years. But, you know, I consider this all to be uncollectible debt at this point in time, not having known where these people are or anything. So, it's, it's up to you guys. We have a resolution on file that we did when I was on the council. When Adrian was a clerk treasurer and I asked Scott if we needed to do a new one. And he said we do not need to do a new one to authorize us to write off debt. He said you guys would just make a motion since we already have one in the books if you wanna do this, um. These debts actually cost us money every single month and it might sound silly, but you print them on those little cards. And then we end up tossing them. They accidentally get mailed. They cost us a stamp when they come back. There's, at this point in time, we just need to get them off there.
So there's no actual water turned on on any of these accounts?
These are, these people don't live here anymore. This is not type, this is just, like, one of these is on the same house that was a rental, like, three different people left bad debts behind. You know, we're pretty conscientious of who's on, in a rental and who owns a home these days. So, it's just a different, you know. I took over in, I was clerk treasurer in two thousand eighteen. And up until, really, the deputy clerk at the time, until she quit, she handled most of the water, stuff like that, so. And she left in, what, nineteen, maybe? So.
Now, the ones that we know that are rentals are the property owners.
You can no longer hold the property owner responsible for these bills for the state of Indiana. They made a change a few years ago. There is some workaround in that that some towns have found. You can have a landlord sign an agreement. You can make them bring in lease paperwork. There's like things back and forth, so.
It'd be nice if we could get a deposit from them.
From the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that's not gonna happen.
Yeah.
Cause they probably don't get their deposits.
Well. Um, I know that on one of these, I called the landlord and I asked him and he gave me a forwarding address, but I never got anything to deliver. And it was a smaller one. It was like fifty, sixty dollars, so.
You might know.
You know, but, um. So that's up to you guys to take action on. I mean, you don't have to write it off. We can let it roll, but just, I mean.
So it would be the total here, four thousand three hundred and seventy dollars, thirty-two cents?
Approximately, how much does that cost us every month?
Well, I mean, you gotta think, those little postcards aren't cheap and all that, so, I mean, it's just, it's just clutter. It's like.
Two stamps a month, that's a dollar a piece.
So, four thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-two cents is the total write-off. Thirty-seven hundred sixty-seven sixty is the wastewater portion and six hundred two dollars and seventy-two cents is the water portion, so. When you make your payment, it always applies to water first. So oftentimes when someone goes into a bad situation. Their water's usually not, they don't owe much on water typically. It's just be wrapped into a big wastewater bill, so.
So does this still get delinquency?
No, that, once they go into final, there are no more penalties applied per, that's Keystone doesn't do that, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to go ahead and write off the four thousand three hundred and seventy dollars, thirty-two cents. Of delinquent. Water and wastewater.
I will second it. Uncollectible debts.
No, not yet. I stay ready. Hold on, take your vote on this.
All in favor, say aye.
Just everybody sign one of these spreadsheets and send it back to me.
I got it, that isn't creating it here.
Uh, you know what? You sent me that thing on the purple lights.
Yeah.
I didn't read it.
You didn't read it?
No.
They're defective and there should be covered under a warranty, so. I think we need to give them a little call and see if we.
They're still bright. I mean, I don't think it's really a safety. Yeah, I mean.
Just leave them alone. You like purple?
I mean, they're still.
I think they're cool. I like them too.
But if they're defective, does that mean they're gonna go ahead and go out and then we'll be out of warranty and then we'll be stuck with them?
Well.
Well, I didn't read the whole article.
Duke put them up. Duke did that lighting upgrade in there.
Well, I figure if we tell them they need replaced, it's gonna be a while, so. And eventually they would've been replaced.
Look for you guys, what do you think? With the park.
So did we pay for the lights?
We did pay for the lights. Um, that was a John McGlynn project. He had those all upgraded and we did pay Duke to upgrade those lights to L E Ds.
See how long their warranties are.
Yeah, we better check more.
Um, can we make it a priority next year to go into? The year with the plan to upgrade some of the park equipment like we talked about?
Yeah. Did you, uh, get a chance to co- talk to Christie about a possible getting?
Um, I think what Christie's gonna say is we need to form a park board. And so, I'm not sure exactly what, who all goes on the park board. I know it's represented here and community members. And you, you form a separate park board for a lot of those D N R grants and those recreation areas. So, cause she and I did talk about that once before. I can shoot her a message tomorrow and ask her. So.
Well, since we were gonna, you're gonna put the trail through there, Mark, if you wanted to jazz up the park and make it really nice. So, you know, you're welcome to be on that park board if you want.
I'm sure you got a lot of free time.
Yeah.
I don't know about that. Yeah, I think you probably do have to be local.
We'll start thinking of people who might be interested in doing that.
Yeah.
Fire department.
Okay. They have a total of six runs, three medical, two fire. Uh, were they both mutually?
Yes.
Uh, but, no?
That was this month.
Okay.
And one, uh, smoke investigation.
Customers tell me like, there was like three or four fires in Sandcut within a couple of days, so that's why I figured it was. Cemetery.
Uh, no report this month.
Okay, oh. Um, fireman's breakfast?
Not this month.
Okay, no breakfast.
Chose to give everybody a break for the holiday.
Well, some of the churches would be having breakfast that Sunday anyway, so.
See, see you in January.
Yeah, I've got here. Okay, so. Four warnings, two citations, one suspicious vehicle, one assist another agency. Assisting a motorist and then accident property damage and then ten traffic stops.
On properties, Kevin, the, hey, nice cleanup job over here at the saloon. They got a lot done.
Had to call him again. He said he would be down here, like, within a day or two, so.
Yeah, um, I think we need to visit over here on West Street. Used to be Bugs' old house. We had a lot of garbage piled up in the back of the truck and in the yard.
That house and then the next one are both trashy.
I don't know what they're doing. Those, those, uh.
Um.
Tammy Landis.
So, all I know about that is Terry. Who Tammy significant other, he would like to sell the property like as is and have someone else tear it down. But I don't know that anybody's gonna go for that deal at this point in time. I do think that we probably need to get in contact with him. It has stood long enough. I do believe the insurance has settled on it. Last time I talked to him, that was all good, so.
You got a phone number for her?
I don't have a phone number for her. I have a phone number for Terry though. You have one, don't you? Yeah, Jase has one too.
For him?
Yes.
But he's not, he doesn't know that.
He's the only one that's been visible, so.
Do we know what's going on with the house just north of that? I know that they haven't, hasn't been as bad as it was for sure, but we also just haven't had, you know. Weather to grow grass?
Yeah, we do need, try need to, you gotta call her for Tammy. I mean, uh, Terry's probably, call Terry, he'll probably give you a number for her. But I, I haven't talked to her. He has been in here a couple of times on this other stuff, so. Oh, I will say for the police department too, um, Andrea filled out A P Vs. We figured out how to get ticket money. We got our first amount of ticket money. We got one hundred and eight dollars. That's about four years worth of ticket money. Cause it's four dollars a ticket, so you don't get a lot. But we did, she filled all those out. I submitted them. We did get our first batch of ticket money.
They had all started set up.
That's right, so, better than nothing.
We got opioid money, opioid.
Opioid money, ticket money, yeah.
Money, we're, we're flush.
So we're about a thousand dollars.
Yeah, there you go, so.
We're on to you.
Okay, on to Natalie. Okay, so on your bills, um, which are right here, Cody. On your bills, Natalie made a mistake. So, I took the town debit card to buy candy for the parade. And then I went to Menards and then like the next week, I was like. What? Who used the town debit card at Menards? I'm like, did Carol come and get it? And then I was like, wait, the town debit card is the same color as my debit card for unlimited green. So I accidentally made a personal purchase on a town debit card. So, here is my check reimbursing the town for that purchase. Yes, it is, Justin. You have never, never signed one. Okay, so there's my check confession on my boo-boo there. Um, I have converted all the fund numbers. And I'm still got a little amount of conversion to do with that project is done. Couple of things that are sitting on my desk. Our budget came back, our seventeen eighty-two budget notice came back incorrect. So I had to resubmit that to Catherine. The budget reduction that we did was not on there. So she, and that was her fault. She, she owned it pretty quickly and so she had to redo that, so I'm still waiting on our budget approval. But it should be fine, um. As far as like the police car grant, that money will most likely come out of edit money. So, that's why when I was saying to look at your fund report. Edit money recovers pretty quickly and we don't, that's not in our regular budget. So that's, that's kinda what I'm earmarking to pay that lease payment for that. M V H money is really low on regular M V H. I haven't had any real tax money from the auditor's office for about three months. I have emailed her twice on that. She has not responded to me. So, um, M V H restricted is in good shape, but M V H is lower than I would like for it to be. Um, other than that, everything else is pretty good.
Quick side note Natalie on that grant. The way they did that for us, the last one we got, when we bought the air compressor and redid the tanker. We got that grant. They took the air compressor and, and the truck and split it. And then the grant amount they split off of each one. So depending on ordering times and delivery times, you may end up paying for one, you may get, we may get one six months before we get the other.
Before we get the other one, okay.
And it'll be split up.
Okay.
Uh, but that's something we can cross with Mr. McGee when, hopefully if we get ahold of him this week, we'll. Know something hopefully before January thirteenth, I hope.
Okay. That's about it. We will have to have an election in twenty twenty-three. It'll be our final town election. So that will have to happen in twenty twenty-three and then, um, that'll be for all counts.
Motion to pay bills?
Go back for public comment.
Oh, public comment, anyone?
Can I just specify some names real quick? Uh, clerk treasurer Natalie.
Montgomery.
Montgomery.
Vice president Cody Manson.
And what's John's last name?
You were talking about the park or whatever. I know, Mac, I was involved a little bit with them. You see their park? They, they did the grant and, uh, did a good job with.
Christie Gerald did that grant. Christie did that grant, yes.
I just say I, I worked with her on that because I was a little bit involved on some of that up there. It turned out pretty nice, actually.
She's ninety miles an hour all the time, so, yeah.
I must love her.
I know, you can't not love her, yeah.
Yeah.
Is it the same one that, what is it, soil and, there's a water concept back there? I forget what time that came, it's the D N R.
It was a D N R grant. I'm not sure. It was a DNR, I'm not sure.
A DNR?
She got some mighty money from the foundation, she did a really good job on that, yeah.
I was gonna say that the foundation is good and we also use the forever fund.
That's what, and we have money in our forever fund that needs to be used.
Yeah, we've got about five thousand in that.
We have about fourteen thousand in that.
Well, I'm, the ten in the, in the park from that. Oh wait a minute, I'm thinking of something else.
You are thinking of something else. I think our park codes, it's around forty-five hundred, whatever you need.
Well, no, the one from the foundation.
Oh, the one from the foundation, yeah, I'm not sure, we need to ask them what's in it.
That's ten thousand that we have.
Okay.
But then when I went to look at equipment and stuff, that doesn't get you very far.
No, no, it doesn't. So, yeah. We can figure something out there, so.
I mean, another ten, twenty.
Yeah, for sure.
Justin, no public comments back there?
He's talking to Jase. Thank you, paying bills.
Thank you, paying bills.
Any one second?
I'll second. I'm off the paying bills.
Okay, we'll have to sign those and pass them back down. Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion and adjourn, and I'll second it.